Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this first meeting of 2017 of the Whitefish City Council. Happy New Year, everyone. And I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I apologize for being a few minutes late. We ran a little late on interviews earlier. So, the first thing will be Pledge of Allegiance. And Carl Cozad, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Carl. It's always good to see you in the audience. Presentations, we'll start with an update on the City Hall Parking Structure Project from Mike Cronquist, the city's owner or representative. Mike, it's all you this evening, bringing us into the new year.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors. The big news is we finished pretty much most of the concrete on the parking structure. We got the last ramp done early in, or late last month. Cables are all tensioned, the forms are coming down, and they're constantly being shipped out. There is still some odds and ends, there's barrier walls and some columns left to pour, and those will be ongoing throughout the next month or two. Inside, they have finished the drywall and taped and textured upstairs and started painting. They started taping and texturing on the first floor. The hollow metal doors, the hollow metal frames are installed. The vault door is installed. The skylight is installed. The interior brick in the lobby is installed, as well as the brick in the upstairs conference room, the main conference room on the second floor. Flathead Electric was on site today installing transformers. I doubt that they got them energized, you know, today, probably tomorrow. Schindler, our elevator contractor, was supposed to be on site today, but he was among the missing today, anyway. But he is scheduled to be on site and start installing the main, the elevator in the lobby. In progress, they're painting the interior doors, taping and texturing on the first floor, or continuing in the parking structure, of course, on the remaining concrete, hand shipping out forms. They have started installing the rolling doors and, I guess, the barricades for the, on the counters for the reception counter in Public Works. And they're framing around those counters as well. They are also framing in the dais and the staff areas up in the council chambers. The masonry is continuing outside. About half of the Second Street wall is complete, and they have about half of the next wall, the first half, first part of that, of the second half of that wall, done. They've started also on the entryway. They will continue on the masonry throughout until it's done. So, I need a page flipper. The masonry is also continuing on the CMU work. That's kind of, has to go on level by level in the parking structure, that'd be the stairwells and the elevator shafts. Miscellaneous concrete, of course, columns on the top deck, continue with tapering and texturing efforts on the first floor, and hopefully start painting before very long. I'm not sure when, as soon as Flathead Electric is done, they'll energize the incoming power, and then the electricians will start powering up the building throughout. There is intent to start hanging some lights a little later on this month. Exterior masonry to continue, the mechanical plumbing and electrical, the trim and finish work is continuing in all areas. Storefronts, I bet you want to know where the storefronts are. The framework is in hand, and what we're waiting on now is the glazing. And what Martel will do is put them up one at a time. They'll remove the visquewing, put the windows in, and then move on to the next one. So Larry was trying to get a hold of the glass contractor and find out where the glass is, the last I talked to this afternoon. At this point in this day, I don't have an answer for that, but it's due this month, probably mid-month, so we'll get those in. We're planning to finish up the brick on Second and Baker Street, the, on the entryway, complete the storefronts, hopefully get the elevator installed, do whatever miscellaneous finish work is necessary in the basement, start the brickwork on the parking structure, get the mechanical equipment, continue getting that ready for startup, continue the finish work in the City Hall, continue the electrical plumbing, the fixture setting, and the lights and appliances, wall switches and things like that, and also the CMU in the parking structure. We have not had a press release in some time, although one of the news stations was out and did do a short story about a month ago, just basically on cold weather work, and they did a very nice job, I thought, a nice presentation. I had just talked to Heidi just this evening, and we're thinking that a little later on this week, we'll do a walkabout and then have something in the pilot, probably next Wednesday. We had areas of concern. For whatever reason, we had what appears to be a frost heave in the main entry in the parking structure. It's not a great big deal, it doesn't appear. It just was evident one of the support struts was bent somewhat. And when we discovered that, I did the pretty comprehensive inspection of the floor slabs, of the columns, of the beams, of the upper deck slabs and columns, and found no evidence of any abnormal movement or activity. We got Sanjay on the phone and had a conference call with him, and I related to him what I found, or more appropriately, did not find, which was any evidence of abnormal stress. So we continue to watch that, and I continue to look at that every day as I go through, and we're not seeing anything, so it doesn't appear to be any kind of an issue. And with that, Mr. Mayor, questions?
Questions for Mike? Frank?
Mike, is, when you say you've got a frost heave in that ramp, what little I know about frost heaves is that once they occur, frost goes away if something happens, and not anything good. Am I missing something here?
Well, when we think that, but we're not seeing that evidence of it. It's, and I'm only saying frost heave because that's what it appears to be, and it's just in a localized spot. And if it does subside, there may be some, some minimal cracking in the slab, but concrete, the slab is going to have a little cracking in it anyway, and that's why you have the construction joints through it. At this point in time, we don't anticipate anything.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Are we still roughly on schedule?
I'm sorry?
Are we still on schedule, more or less?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, we are at about E. seventy-five to eighty percent complete right now.
On the entire project, or just City Hall?
No, on the, on the entire project.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, Mike, thank you.
Thank you.
Stay warm.
Yes.
All right. Communications from the public, set aside. This is time to set aside for the public to comment on items that are either on the agenda but not a public hearing, or items not on the agenda. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council? If so, please step forward and give your name and address, please. And if you're not familiar with the process, if you could spell your last name, it makes life a little easier for those who are taking the minutes. Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Batten. S.H.A.R.L.O.T., Batten, B-A-T-T-I-N, 185 Reservoir Road, Whitefish.
Microphone, yeah.
Microphone. I just wanted to talk about easements this, this evening, because there seems to be a lot of confusion around what they are and how they work, and all that kind of stuff. I think some of you know that I inherited a large piece of property from my mother that has an easement on it with the Nature Conservancy. It's approximately 190 acres. My grandmother put it under this easement 30 years ago, so things have changed since then, but even so, the covenants are still in place with them. Some, an entity actually holds an easement. They don't own the property, they don't own the easement. So whether you're with the Nature Conservancy, or the Montana Land Reliance, or Flathead Land Trust, or whatever, they're, they're all different but similar in that you have to draw up a lot of do's and don'ts when, when you sign on with them. But it is still private property. There is no, it doesn't mean, oh, this is a nature reserve, so everybody gets to come and recreate and look at the animals. And, which kind of brings me to the Bike and Pedestrian Path Plan that was proposed, which I knew nothing about until very recently, and there were some dots and arrows and things that were going through the Conservancy property from up around Reservoir Road. So, in order to have any of that happen, you would have to go through a whole process with the holder of the easement, as well as the owner, if it wasn't just rejected straight off. So, the, the city has a limited easement on what is roughly Texas Avenue, and it goes back to 1913, if I have my numbers right. And it was to build a water line from the reservoir down what is Texas Avenue to, to the city. The city actually built this water line in 2007. So at this point in time, the only access that the city has to, to this is in order to do repairs or maintenance on the water line. So there was some wordage in one of the documents that came out regarding the Bike and Pedestrian Path that the city of Whitefish owned a conservation easement on the property. Wrong. So I just wanted to clarify that. The, the property border on the, on the west side goes from the Whitefish Lake Lodge parking lot all the way up to Reservoir Road, and then from Wisconsin and Reservoir up to the reservoir. So that is all Nature Conservancy property in there. And I know everybody's busting to go in there and put up some hotels and things, but it's never going to happen. My grandmother specified that this land was for the animals and the enjoyment of the local residents, and the water, and the trees, and that's it. No development, ever.
Charlotte, if I can interrupt you for just a moment.
Sure.
If we're going to discuss the bike path portion of your comments, we'll have to save that for the public hearing.
Yeah, that, that's for later. I just, I just wanted to-
Thanks. No, I understand the connection, yeah.
Sort of make a connection here. The south side of the property is at the end of Texas Avenue, and Hidden Meadow Preserve is on my fence line. Crestwood is on my fence line to the east, and then, or, I'm sorry, to the west, and then to the east. It goes all the way over to the Haycocks property. So this, this is also all conservation easement property. So it's been a pretty interesting taking over this rather large responsibility since my mother was in total control right up until her last breath. So I'm, I'm kind of thrashing around here, trying to figure out what's going on myself, but I can assure you that this land is not going to be developed, it's not going to be sold, it's not going to be busted up, and in spite of all the trespassing and the hunters and the, the encroachers on the fence line, it's going to stay just like it is. And my inheritors will keep it that way as well. I just wanted to clarify the, the easement part of it.
Great. Thank you so much, Charlotte. Anyone else wish to address council?
Fifteen Scholar Boulevard, spelling, last name is F-E-R-D-A. And until midnight on the 31st of December, I was your Assistant Chief of Police. I wanted to take just a couple moments and thank a few people, but also just to highlight law enforcement a little bit. I mean, they're, nationally, it's not a good time for law enforcement officers. In our town, it's a great time for law enforcement officers, because you guys believe in us. Our town believes in us. And we know that, but I'd like to highlight it with some of the other emotional things that are boiling up around town right now. This vest, I don't know if you guys have ever handled one of those, but your officers wear those when they go to work. We kind of go to work for one reason, and I'm going to, I'd like to read just a couple of things here. I took this, oh, a little over 28 years ago, and it hasn't changed much, I think, even from when Chief Dial took it, even probably further back than that. My fundamental responsibility as a public safety officer is to serve the community, safeguard lives and property, protect the innocent, keep the peace, and ensure the constitutional rights of all are not abridged. I will perform all duties impartially, without favor or ill will, and without regard to status, sex, race, religion, creed, political belief, or aspiration. I will treat all citizens equally and with courtesy, consideration, and dignity. I will never allow personal feelings, feelings, animosities, or friendships to influence my official conduct. There's a few more in here, but the last one, I think, it brings it down even more individually, is I will at all times ensure that my character and conduct is admirable, and will not bring discredit to my community, my agency, or my chosen profession. So each night when those officers go to work, they put that vest on, you know, being a man of few words and behind the scenes most of the time, is what I would say is the officers, 139 of them this year, in our country's, you know, die serving their communities in one way or another. Not all because they needed a bulletproof vest, some were car crashes, but the idea is that when they got up and went to their shift, they had families to come home to. A lot of them had kids, and they had lives, and they chose to do that. No matter what anybody's belief is, officers choose to take a bullet for each and every person in their community. It's a little somber, you know, and so it kind of can bring things back a little bit more when we're thinking not so much on the emotional level. But we try not to do that at work. We're not allowed to do that at work. You don't want your police officers reacting off of emotion. And it's not my purpose here to come in and lecture tonight, it's just a little bit to let you know that for 28 years, I've enjoyed being a police officer, and I'm very grateful. Whitefish took a chance in me, they trusted me, and they gave me a lot of responsibility. I've prowled alleyways and streets, in the schools, under the water, and Saturday night, when Chief Dial was driving around and the, and the bell rang and the other officers were down there, they said, well, what are you going to do now, Assistant Chief? I said, well, I'm thinking about pulling my gun out, starting to shoot the Christmas decorations. And about that time, Chief Dial said, I think I'll go home. But that being said, really, I'm very grateful, and I'm honored to the trust that the community put in me. I've raised my family here, and this is my community. I would like to thank Chief Dial for his leadership. When he came in here, we were growing, as the town grew, the police department grew, our responsibility grew, and our professionalism grew. And that was through his leadership and his trust in me at the individual level and friendship. So Bill, I thank you for that. When I left, I was W. two, there was eight, I was a six, you know, when I started, I was, there were seven of us, there are 16 officers now. But each of us, when we go to work, we joke about the other half of what makes us a police officer. Most of the guys I started with, or I look back, 28 years ago, I went to Law Enforcement Academy, are not married anymore. They're not married to their original spouses. Some of them aren't on the job anymore, some of them have substance abuse problems. I would have not have made it without W. two and a half, and I'd like to acknowledge my wife, Laura. Thank you. Thank you, Whitefish. It's been a good run.
Mike, before you go, I wish John were here to say these words as well, or whatever words he was going to say. I know you did not want to make a big fuss about your retirement. I am so glad you came in tonight. We appreciate, we honor you and your fellow law enforcement folks, both here in our community, and over the state, and throughout the country. I want to say that we salute all of you who have chosen to serve and protect, and we just can't say thank you enough. And so I personally, on behalf of the city, want to say thank you, and thanks for coming in, so we could say that to you right to your face. Thank you. And enjoy that retirement, it's got a lot going for it. Might even want to run for City Council, who knows? Wow. Anyone else wish to address the public, or any, or just the council this morning? Whoa, Mike's got me all goofed up. Anyone else from the public wish to address council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to communications from volunteer boards. Anyone in the public on a volunteer board that wishes to give us an update? How about councilors? Katie?
This was included in the city manager's report, but just to reiterate, I am Chief Dial's alternate for the 911 Flathead Emergency Service Committee, and I'm also on the 911 By-Law Rewrite Committee. And on the fifth Monday of this month, there will be a gathering of the city of Sea Falls discussing a proposed amendment to the 911 in a local agreement, which may address certain governance and funding mechanisms within the agreement. So we will be inviting all council members and anyone in the public to this meeting.
Thanks, Katie. Anybody else on council? It's Chief Dial?
As you know, I'm your representative of 911 Administrative Board, and recently, we've been looking at our manpower at the, at the center, and what shifts were working. So not to be too long-winded, but I was empowered by the admin board to meet with the dispatchers, to meet with the executive director of the dispatch center, and to come up with some different types of shifts. That was after we had an audit. And we've come to a tentative agreement, it has to go before the full board next week, but it will allow for a little bit more rotating of shifts, so people are not stuck on midnights for five years. And that was a big issue with some of the retention. We also, the auditors also came up with this thing they call a silo effect, where when people work together too often, they get a little catty, and that some of the work was not getting done just because of who they were used to be, who they are now. So that's being addressed also. Another thing, and the most important thing, is we had authority for 29 FTEs. We've come to an agreement, we'll go down to 26 and a half. And by looking at all of this, our hope is that when we look for a new funding mechanism for the dispatch center, that we can tell our stakeholders, this is what we've done. We've, we've had an outside entity come in and look at what we're doing. They say we're doing a pretty good job, and we've taken it a step further, and we're using the resources you provide for us, specifically money, to provide you the best services you can provide. So that's where we are going right now. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I know it's, normally I would save these kinds of comments to the end, but since there is an audience, and for the viewing audience, I just want to remind folks, and Mike Ferda's retirement is further reminder, that Tom Cannelli is also retiring, and there will be a party here at City Hall, a celebration of Tom's service to our city, both as chief and as fire marshal, here at City Hall, Friday at 3:00 in the afternoon. And I hope as many of you as possible can come in, and those in the viewing audience, I hope some of you will be able to come in and help Tom celebrate his retirement. With that, I'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll either need a motion, or, well, we'll start with a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counselor Sweeney, seconded by Counselor Franzen, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, any comment? All those, oh, comment?
Yep.
Oh, all those in favor, say, raise your hand, all right. Any opposed, and it passes unanimously. Thanks, Michelle. That moves us now on to public hearings. We have just two public hearings tonight. One is considerate. First is consideration of an application from the Reich family partnership for a conditional use permit for eight-room boarding house plus a manager's unit at 625 Park Avenue. That's on page 95 of your packet.
All right.
And staff.
Good evening. So the application request before you is a conditional use permit for a boarding house. This proposed residential structure will have eight units plus a manager unit for the long-term workforce housing. The applicant is intending for there to be four rentable rooms on the ground, in the basement, and four rentable rooms with a shared kitchen, plus a manager's unit on the main floor. So the project doesn't exactly meet the definition of boarding house, if you happen to have a chance to look that up. The rental term will be for more than 30 days, which is our standard residential definition, and no meals are going to be provided. However, the zoning administrator made a determination that it was the closest to what the applicant was proposing and what we had in our zoning. So access to this development is existing, it's off of East Seventh Street, which serves an existing parking lot. No footprints changes are proposed to the structure, and any facade changes will require architectural review. So again, a conditional use permit is a requirement for a boarding house in WR4 zoning district. The property is about a third of an acre, it's located at 625 Park Avenue. This property is developed, that formerly housed the Independent High School, that's been vacant for several years. Counselor Hildner asked a question at the planning board, how many kids were at the Independent High School? And I called the school district, and they said it was between 17 to 25 students, plus a couple of teachers were there during the, when it was the Independent High School. The property is surrounded by residential uses, the zoning is WR4, it has our high-density residential growth policy designation, and it's all served by all public services and facilities. Notice was mailed to adjacent landowners, advisory agencies, and the legal is placed in the pilot. We did receive three comment letters, or four comment letters. They were concerned with the increase in density and possible negative impacts related to the additional residences, especially providing housing for residents or seasonal workers. An additional letter was received, and they had questions about access onto East Seventh Street, and questions about landscaping. We did review this application according to the criteria in the zoning regulations, and hit just some of the highlights. Again, this project isn't exactly a boarding house, and isn't exactly a dorm, and so we had the applicant look at the two parking standards, and they developed an average between the two, which resulted in 18 parking spaces, and we felt that was acceptable. The applicant noted, and it was pointed out in some of the public comment letters, that people residing here may ride bikes, and so we did recommend a condition of approval that they would install a bike rack. The access meets all the fire department requirements. Again, the parking is existing, it's located to the south of the residence off of East Seventh Street. It's not ideal, it's kind of a wide access along there, but it is an existing condition. There is adequate maneuvering room from the back of the parking spaces before you actually get to the sidewalks, so there is room to turn around before exiting onto the street. that the site plan meets all the current landscaping requirements, or they provide us with a landscaping plan to bring the site up to current standards. Any new signage would require a sign permit. They aren't, they don't have any plans to add any new impervious area, but if they add more than 5,000 square feet, they would have to get an engineered stormwater plan. No traffic impact study was required. Again, they're not making any changes to the actual structure itself. The existing neighborhood is a mix of single-family homes and multifamily, and schools. The proposed density comes in at about nine dwelling units per acre, which is pretty comparable to that neighborhood over there, which, and also the land use designation calls for 2 to 12, so it's falling within that range. This structure's been part of the neighborhood since the 1950s, it's a pretty old building. But it's been a variety of non-residential uses, including a medical clinic, that's what it was originally constructed for, a church, and then most recently, the Independent High School. So the conversion into this structure is going to bring it a little bit more into line with the residential neighborhood. The planning board held a public hearing on December 12th. Staff recommended approval, subject to 10 conditions of approval. At the public hearing, two neighbors spoke, and they had concerns with how this project was going to fit into the neighborhood. The planning board did recommend approval of this conditional use permit. In making the decision, the board added a couple of new conditions, number 10 and 11. During the presentation, and I'm sure they'll mention again, the applicant talked about kind of the house rules, and that they would like to make sure that, you know, it's a good environment for their workers. And so the planning board added a condition, that the conditional use permit will include the rules of occupancy developed by the original proponent, in the event that they sell it and it goes on to somebody else. The other condition that they added was that a manager must reside on site to enforce the rules of occupancy. Staff is concerned with the enforceability of proposed condition number 10. This condition could place our department in the position of enforcing occupancy rules that are in an essentially private residence. And some of these rules may also regulate behavior that's subject to criminal penalties, and we're not set up to enforce those types of rules. We're much more comfortable with condition number 11. There'd be someone on site that would enforce these particular rules, and that condition would go with the land, if anyone else decided to purchase this building. Also, laws such as disturbing the peace, they pertain to all citizens in Whitefish, and would also apply to this facility. These types of laws are enforced by the police department, and they are trained to handle these complaints that are criminal in nature. So staff would respectfully request that the council would strike condition number 10 as recommended by the planning board, and then just renumber those subsequent conditions. So just to hit a few highlights of the conditions of approval. We want to make sure that the rental agreements are not for less than 30 days, just in keeping with the residential character of that neighborhood. There are some outdoor lighting that doesn't comply with the light, outdoor lighting standards right now. We want to make sure those lights are brought into compliance now, and that any new lights would be dark sky compliant. Any refuse and recycling location would need to be reviewed and approved by Public Works in North Valley Refuge. That they would remove those parking spaces located in the front yard setbacks, and make sure that there's no less than 18 parking spaces. A bike rack would be installed, landscaping plan. And then, I think that's about it. Can I answer any questions for you?
Any questions for Wendy? Frank?
Wendy, what was the concern about house rules? And the only thing that I can make an analogy to is condominium rules and regs, those kinds of things. Is, are we, are they asking for something different, or is that, is that what was being suggested? What exactly, what are we doing?
Right. I think they indicated that they wouldn't allow alcohol and drugs, and they'd have quiet hours, and they're all things that were going to make the neighborhood happy, and that's, the planning board wanted to ensure that that would continue, not only with this conditional use permit with this owner, but if this person sold it to somebody new, that those same, similar rules would apply. So they are essentially a private agreement, as part of their rental agreement. And we just are uncomfortable with being in the middle of enforcing those types of rules that are really outside the land use realm.
Okay.
Any other questions for Wendy? All right, we did invite a public hearing, and I do have a list of people who wish to speak, and we'll start with the proponent, Dale.
Oh.
Oh.
I'm Dale Reich with the Reich Partnership. I'm also partnered up with Pat Carlos, Tupelo Grill. I just put my name on there, in case there were questions that needed to be answered. I don't, I don't specifically have any other comments, other than the rules. We know that we need to provide a good environment for the people that stay there, and if we do that, we're sure it'll also be a good environment for the neighbors. It just doesn't work if you're in those type of quarters, and, you know, you can't get peace and sleep. So it's just part of what we see we need to do. We started making a list of rules, but we met today with Chris Hyatt from the landlord, who happens to manage the property just south, and he's happy to take this property on, which we're very grateful for, because he could give us good input on how to properly manage the property, because one of the comments with the neighbors was, they were very happy with that property south of us, how it was being managed, and so that's about all the comments I have, unless there's questions.
Okay, great. Thanks, Dale. Anyone else from the public wish to address the council?
My name is Mark Johnson. I'm the project architect, 680 Stone Street. I don't really have much to add, but I will answer any questions anybody has. I think the plans, as we've developed them, I feel are a good use for that, that building. It's adequate for the purpose that is being proposed. It has proper life safety measures, and we've accepted all the conditions that the planning board and the planning department have asked. We can accommodate all of those matters. If there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody else? One of the things that came out, up during the planning board discussion was the fact that you, with this gathering of folks and residents, that there might be a need for somebody wants to have a barbecue, and then I don't see on your plan that any accommodation for that. Have you, have you given that more thought?
Yes, and on, on the supplemental site plan that I handed out, if you sort of look, sort of the middle top part of the pager, there's kind of a gray area with an X there. And what that is, is an 18 by 19-foot open-air patio, and it's bordered on the north side by the, the Egress stairwell that comes out of the basement. And then it's bordered on the west side of that patio by the east side of the building. Our plan would be, there is an exit right there that exits the ground level of the building, and our plan would be to screen that on the south side as well, leaving it basically open on the east side. Anybody using that space would be able, you know, look to the east views over there. But for the most part, they're, they're kind of screened from view, gives them a little bit more privacy, a dedicated space for an outside area for people to congregate. This would be in addition to the interior resident lounges. We have, you know, resident TV lounges, one on the ground level, one in the basement as well.
Okay. Jim?
Can you help me understand on the, the drawing here, the dotted gray area at the very bottom that sort of jogs along the bottom, what is that section? Right below the parking lot, and then it jogs up as it moves east?
Oh, I believe that is just a notation that designates the existing parking. Is that where it says, existing parking, and then there's kind of an arrow that dashed?
So below that area, so right above the words, East 7th Street, there's a dotted gray area that extends through the property.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's the sidewalks that are running along the boundaries of the lot. So those gray areas are sidewalks.
And the access to the parking area is not a single-point access, it's along the whole area?
No, it's quite, quite wide right now, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, anyone else in the public wish to address the council with regards to this public hearing? Once, twice? With that, I'll close the public hearing and turn it back to council for comment and/or a motion.
I have a question for Dave Taylor. The boarding house definition, Wendy said it didn't exactly fit, but that's the definition we went with here for this use. What impact does this project now have on the rest of the zones that would include boarding houses?
Wouldn't really have an impact on a future boarding house. We may look at an amendment to our code that would further clarify this sort of workforce housing, something that we're working on for the planning board, actually, for the next month's meeting, so we can probably address, and we're going to be creating a new definition for workforce housing, these separate projects. That's one of the reasons this has a condition that it's 30 days or more, because a boarding house allows less than that. So with the conditional use process, it allows the flexibility to make sure it gives us what we want. But there really wasn't anything else in the code that was close enough to that, so it is kind of a boarding house, so we chose to go with that and make it a conditional use.
Thank you.
Stand ready for a motion if somebody wishes to move. Pam?
I move to approve WCUP 16-08, the findings of fact in the staff report and the conditions of approval, striking condition number 10, and renumbering the subsequent conditions as recommended by the Whitefish Planning Board. I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Barberis, a second by Counselor Williams. Any further discussion? Frank?
Just point of clarification, Pam, I think, did you mean, or did you say, resolution number 1701, or did you say 1608?
There's, there is no resolution on this one.
Where are we, public hearing?
Uh, yeah, it's 7A.
7A, I'm sorry. Wait, draw on my comment.
Yeah, all right. Any other comment? All right, all those in favor of the above motion, please indicate by raising your hand. All opposed, none, so it passes unanimously. And that, thank you very much, gentlemen. And that brings us to the next public hearing, resolution number, now it's your turn, Frank, 17-02, a resolution of intention indicating its intent to adopt the Connect Whitefish Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan as an amendment to the 2007 Whitefish City Council Master Plan. And who's from staff?
Good evening. That's me.
Oh, sorry. I was finding you, Dave.
So, yeah, this is the Connect Whitefish Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. It was put together by the consultant, WGM Group, in conjunction with the Parks and Rec Department and our Public Works Department. It's focused on our city limits, but also includes related facilities in the surrounding area. It's a companion document to our 2007 Whitefish City County Growth Policy, is therefore an amendment to that policy, and it replaces the 1998 Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. It's also to be used in conjunction with our 2009 Whitefish Transportation Plan, the 2013 City of Whitefish Parks and Recreation Master Plan, our 2015 Downtown Master Plan, and our 2011 Whitefish Safe Routes to Schools Improvement Plan. So basically, this plan covers quite a bit of territory as far as connectivity of existing routes, comfort and safety, maintenance of facilities. It specifically addresses existing conditions and recommendations for connectivity, safety, wayfinding, maintenance, programming, and funding for improvement. To engage the public, the city had, and consulted a public outreach in April, May, and June of 2016. That consisted of online surveys, a dedicated Facebook page, several community meetings, and an outreach at the farmer's market. And there's more on that on the appendix C in the document. So because this is an amendment to our growth policy, we need to look at its relationship to the growth policy. And the growth policy has several goals in our community facilities and our transportation elements of the plan, so we'll just go through those really briefly. Within the facilities element and the Parks Recreation Section of our master plan, it talks about goal number one, expand the diversity of parks, open spaces, and high-quality recreational opportunities for the growing Whitefish area. That goal is reiterated in the plan in objective one under the recreational goals, and so there's a finding that it does support that goal with, of our growth policy. Within the transportation element of the plan, there's several transportation element goals. They are, provide an efficient and effective transportation system to serve the present and future needs of the Whitefish area, and integrate transportation and land use planning so that the choices of transportation modes are optimized, and this plan does facilitate those goals. And then there's two policies. One should be the policy of the city of Whitefish to support non-motorized transportation through community planning and capital improvement planning and programming, and the city shall seek ways to reduce the community's carbon footprint through the efficiencies in the transportation system, reduction of vehicle miles traveled, and through promoting non-motorized transportation. And this plan does support and facilitate both of those goals and policies of the 2007 Master Plan. And then within the recommended actions of our growth policy, one of them is make construction of new sidewalks and pathways a priority in areas where they do not currently exist, and this plan does outline opportunities and funding mechanisms for the construction of new sidewalks and pathways. And then number five under that, it says, the city shall make the provision of sidewalks, pathways, and other non-motorized transportation facilities part of a concurrency program and policy. And a concurrency program refers to codified or required developer obligations for multimodal transportation systems. So if someone's developing a project, we'd first set a threshold for the level of service that we'd want, and then expect a developer, if he's going to increase the number of people using that, where it would no longer meet that level of service, that they'd be required to put in those types of facilities. Currently, only our subdivision regulations require that type of concurrency, and the growth policy calls for a more complete concurrency program and policy. That's something that wasn't really part of the scope of this particular plan, and so I made a recommendation to add some additional language, which I'll talk about later, under the planning board recommendations with regard to that. So staff reviewed this plan, and we think it adequately addresses our existing conditions and our recommendations for connectivity, safety, wayfinding, maintenance, programming, and funding for improvements. And we did support the plan. The Whitefish City Parks Board reviewed this particular plan on November 1st, and they recommended approval with two additional elements, which was a map change to remove the path that's shown through Charlotte Batten's property, changing a dotted line, but adding arrows on either side, and then additionally, changes to maps 1, 4, and 6, adding references to Whitefish Trail trailheads. There was also some additional recommendations that came from legacy partners, and that's also within the recommendations of the planning board. So we recommended approval. The planning board held a public hearing on November 17th. At that public hearing, the planning consultant, Mr. Greer from WGM Group, who will also speak more elements of this plan tonight, spoke to the planning board and answered questions. We had attorney Kami Sawtelle spoke on behalf of Charlotte Batten, and talked about her conservation easement, and they did not want any red line or arrows shown on the property showing any future trail. And then Heidi Van Everen also spoke on behalf of the relationship between the plan and the Whitefish Trail, and discussed her proposed map and text edits. So the planning board, following the public hearing, unanimously recommended approval of the referenced growth policy amendment, and their recommended changes included a motion to remove the dotted line and the arrows shown on the map outside Charlotte Batten's property per Ms. Batten's wishes, and that was approved 5 to 1 with Counselor Hildner opposed. And then there was a motion by Mecoleen Laidlaw to add my recommended language, which is on page 41 of the plan, to add a 12th item that would say, study acceptable levels of service for multimodal transportation and evaluate and improve existing concurrency programs and policies. And that amendment was approved unanimously. And additionally, the changes recommended by the Parks Board were unanimously recommended, and those are in my transmittal letter. I can go over those just really quickly. On page 12, paragraph A, the last paragraph would be edited to reference the six other plans, and then some additional language under B that would talk about the additional plans in more detail. And then on page 21, discuss the Whitefish Trail characteristics. Page 30- of service for multimodal transportation and evaluate and improve existing concurrency programs and policies." And that amendment was approved unanimously. And additionally, the changes recommended by the Parks Board were unanimously recommended, and those are in my transmittal letter. I can go over those really quickly. On page 12, paragraph A, the last paragraph would be edited to reference the six other plans, and then some additional language under B that would talk about the additional plans in more detail. And then on page 21, discuss the Whitefish Trail characteristics. Page 30, talk about the Whitefish Trail budget, and page 39, talk about existing sidewalk connectivity, and all that is, the specifics of that are listed in the transmittal. I won't read all those things. But the planning board did recommend approval, and the minutes of that meeting are attached if you have more questions, and I'd be glad to try to answer any, but we do have a presentation from Mr. Greve that'll go into more detail of the specifics of the plan.
Thank you, Dave. BJ, you're on, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you, sir. Is it unprecedented to take this off of here?
Not at all.
Is that acceptable?
Help yourself.
Alright, wonderful.
Just don't drop it.
Maybe at the end, though. Okay, so my name is BJ Greve, I'm with WGM Group, and I had the good fortune of being selected by WGM Group and by the City of Whitefish and by everybody else to work on this project. This was a spectacular project. It was a career highlight, very cool collaborative project involving many, many stakeholders and many, many cool ways to participate, so it was a great project. Interestingly, the city council approved the scope of services going back to January 19th of 2016, so we are just under one year for this project to be done, so it's cool. First thing I figured I'd do is talk about the process we used real quick, and then talk about the content, and I promise in the interest of brevity to not belabor this. I didn't bring a PowerPoint or anything like that. Just wanted to hit some of the highlights. So we kicked this off in January with meetings with city staff, as well as meetings with the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and then we followed that up by doing a survey. We had the luck of being able to partner with the Flathead City-County Health Department, and before I forget, before I go any further, I want to throw out there that this project could not have been done for the budget that it was done for and with the scope of public participation without the assistance of the Flathead City-County Health Department, and specifically Teresa Majeski, who was a, this relationship is interesting. She is employed by the CDC, and then she is provided, you might say, on loan to local jurisdictions to help with building active communities and things like that. So we had her as a resource, and it was incredible. She did all, pretty much all the outreach, all the Facebook work, all that kind of stuff. She organized a lot of meetings. She was a tremendous resource, she had a ton of energy, and so before I go any further, I want to make sure to thank her and have that on the record, because she was an awesome resource. I think everybody really enjoyed working with her, and she's not here anymore. I think she got sent off to LA. We thought we were going to lose her at one point to the Zika virus, to going down to somewhere and helping fight the Zika virus on behalf of the CDC, but we didn't lose her, so she was able to see the project through. We did all kinds of neat public participation methods. We did a group bike ride, we did the Bike to School Day, we did community forums, two different community forums. We were at the farmer's market, and during all those events, we tried to push people towards participating in the survey. So not only did we inform them of the project at those events, but we said, hey, when you get home, go online, take the survey, and we had a tremendous response to the survey. We had over 400 respondents, which for a plan in a community the size is really, really a significant participation rate. We finished it up just after the farmer's market in the beginning of June, and we put out the survey results. There was a newspaper article in July, and then through June and July, we went ahead and we were writing the plan. Let me also stop here and say, Heidi was an awesome participant in this process because she really got the word out. We had great coverage in the local paper. We couldn't have raised the level of awareness about the project we did without Heidi's participation and interest, and we appreciate her stories very, very much. So the public draft was available August 25th. We put it out there using Facebook, and we had an email list. We, there was another news article, and then we had a deadline for comment in September, another news article in September, as well as another deadline for another round of comments. So we took multiple rounds of comments, brought it into the plan, looked at the plan, reassessed certain areas of the plan. And then we had, the final draft was provided in October. It was posted online, and then, let's see, Parks Board had a look at it, made some recommendations. There was a legal notice, it went to the planning board, they made some recommendations. You guys have those in front of you here tonight, and so you have this plan, and you have a handful of proposed revisions. There's a couple other, you might say, de minimis changes that I just wanted to throw out there. Wendy Compton-Ring was nice enough to throw me a couple typos that I'll definitely make sure to correct. The Whitefish logo needs to go on the cover that was brought forward by a handful of folks. Right now, the cover only has our logo. This Connect Whitefish logo was done by a local graphic designer named Dave?
Downing.
Thank you, Dave Downing. Thank you very much. Who said that? Yeah, thanks. He volunteered that time, and I don't want to make sure to overlook that either, because that was tremendous. That was, that's a great logo. It worked really well for project recognition and for continuity throughout the process. So the other thing was, there are a few trailheads for the Whitefish Trail that are missing from the map, and I wanted to point out that those need to be added. Those trailheads are the Swift Creek Trailhead, a Future Whitefish Trail Trailhead at the trailhead location on Big Mountain Road, Future Whitefish Trail Trailhead at the proposed trailhead location on Big Mountain Road, being added to both maps one and map four, and then the same trailhead being added to map six. So again, those are minor changes, but I did want to point those out because we'll be making those as well, and I didn't want any surprises. The content of the plan, I won't bore you with the content of the plan, hopefully you've had an opportunity to look at it. The plan is not crafted in your classic sort of existing characteristics, projected trends, goals, and policies. It's really more crafted in the manner that we receive feedback from the public. There are six primary sections of the plan, and again, those are laid out not so much in your classic plan format, but in the way the City of Whitefish and the community responded. Connectivity was a main concept that people brought forward, safety was another concept, wayfinding, maintenance, programming, and funding. So those six topics, the plan is built around those six topics. And again, in the interest of brevity, I won't bore you with any other details here tonight, because hopefully you have an opportunity to look at the plan. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions? No.
Cool, and let me say, Chuck?
Oh, sorry, Chuck. BJ, these changes that you just brought up, and any others that the council might adopt tonight, or give direction to adopt, the next action on the, tonight is a resolution of intention, so the next action would be at their next meeting on January 17th, which would normally be on the consent agenda, but do you think your changes and any others would be incorporated in time to get into that packet, so that they'd be seeing the final, or is that too ambitious?
Yeah, I can make that happen. If you needed to go in the packet for that meeting, when do you need it by?
A week from today, like right, by right now.
Let's do it.
Okay. And if not, let us know, and we can put it off as well, because I think the council and the packet where they do the final adoption should see the final plan.
My only, my only reservation is I need to get with our GIS division down in Missoula to have them rework those maps. If they've got a backlog, that could slow it down, but we're not talking about major revisions here, so I think that's feasible.
And if not, just let us know, and we'll put it off to a subsequent meeting.
I'm gonna try to get that done.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you, BJ.
Then before I sit down, I have to say, Karen Hilding, Craig Workman, awesome to work with, awesome partners to work, I really appreciate their helpfulness. They gave me all the information I needed, they were always responsive, and this was an awesome project. Everybody in the community that participated, thanks, it was great.
Before we go, I'd like to say, just because I was involved in this as we went along, and I really appreciated your leadership and WGM Group's leadership. I don't think it worked out quite the way you had envisioned initially. This is a fine product, what I've seen to date, and so it's clearly not a sit-on-the-shelf type plan, which is what our objective was to begin with. And with that, I'll open it up to further public comment on this plan. Any member of the public, Charlotte?
Charlotte Batten, 185 Reservoir Road. I just wanted to thank BJ and Heidi and all of you for your understanding and cooperation in removing these lines that I knew nothing about until about a month ago, actually two months ago. And I think, had the lines been on a property line rather than through the middle of a conservation easement, I think I probably would not have reacted quite so strongly to that. And that's definitely a possibility in the future, but unfortunately, it kind of went through the middle of an easement, so it wasn't going to work. I thank you so much for dealing with that.
Thank you, Charlotte. Anyone else wish to address the council? Once, twice? Seeing no further comment, I'll turn it back to council for a motion and/or discussion. Jen, I see you reaching for the microphone.
I will sure try. I would move to approve Resolution 17-02, a resolution of intention indicating its intent to adopt the Connect Whitefish Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan as amended to the 2007 Whitefish City-County Master Plan, with minor amendments as recommended by the Parks Board and the Planning Board, and including edits presented tonight by BJ Greve's correcting typographical errors and omissions.
Wow, well done.
Seconded.
And seconded. It has been moved by Counselor Franz and is seconded by Counselor Sweeney to approve Resolution 17-02. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by raising your hand, and it passes unanimously. Michelle, thank you all very much. Charlotte, thank you for coming in. BJ, and with that, I do want to say thanks to the City-County Health Department. That was a huge boost to this project, and it would not have the same emphasis that I think it otherwise might have had, so thanks.
And one addition, this planning process was a fantastic job of involving the public. There have been many projects go through over the years, and this one had so much public participation, and on the few occasions that I got to interact with you guys, you were so amendable to changing the process to make sure that it fit the public's needs, so thank you.
Alright, with that, we'll move on to communications from the Planning and Building Director with consideration of approval of minor preliminary plat, amending plat Lot 1, Torgerson subdivision, address 835 West 7th Street and Two-Lot subdivision. It's on page 250 of your packet. Hi Bailey.
Hi.
And Happy New Year to you.
Happy New Year to you as well. So this is a request for a preliminary plat approval of a two-lot subdivision. The subject property is approximately a little over 4.2, or excuse me, 6.4 acres, a little dyslexic there. Currently, there is an existing single-family residence that will remain on Lot 1B. That's proposed size is about 1.6 acres. Lot 1A will be around 4.7 acres, and that lot is currently vacant. Lot 1B will have frontage off of Carrow Avenue, however, the current access to the residential structure is off of West 7th Street, and the owners are proposing a 60-foot-wide road and utility easement for Lot 1B in that location of the current existing driveway. As a, the property is located at 835 West 7th Street, it's right on the corner of West 7th and Carrow Avenue. The subject property, it was recently annexed into the city limits on August 6th of 2016, and it was rezoned from County R3 to City WR1, which is our one-family residential district, on December 5th. As of writing my report and as of tonight, the zoning has not been amended on the Flathead County GIS map to reflect that recent zone change, if anybody had looked at that, but it did get approved. Let's see, I'm trying to hit the highlights here. We did mail a notice to the adjacent landowners within 150 feet on December 9th. I did also place a sign on the property, and I have had a number of people that have called and come in with questions, but I've had no formal comments submitted on this project at all. We've reviewed the project for a minor subdivision with our subdivision regulations, and I'm going to hit the highlights of the criteria, or try to. So the property and the entire city is located within the wildland urban interface, and the reason I'm hitting this is that the applicant has been in contact with Tom Cannelly, the fire marshal, and I believe I attached his emails as part of the packet as well, who indicated that based on the amount of forest vegetation on this property, which pretty much is the entire property other than where the house sits, they, based on the amount of mitigation that's going to be required for this property, he was suggesting that it could take place over a portion of five years, once plans were formalized. So I have added a condition of approval, that a vegetation management plan would be developed in compliance with our requirements, and that it include a commencement date of five years from final plat approval, not approval tonight if that happens. So it would be whenever the, that lots are actually created. Both lots do have legal and physical access to West 7th Street and Carrow Avenue. Lot 1B will have a 30-foot-wide frontage off of Carrow Avenue for any future access. They're not proposing to get rid of the existing driveway at this time, hence the easement. The proposed subdivision would generate approximately 10 new trips per day, since that's less than 200 trips. They did not have to do a traffic impact study, and the streets do appear to obviously be able to adequately handle that with the new 7th Street reconstruction project, so hopefully they can take 10 new trips. There does not appear to be any groundwater, or this area has high groundwater, but this would be reviewed by the Public Works Department for any new water and sewer connections. There does not appear to be any surface water sources. Stormwater management plan was not required, there is no development currently proposed. If more than 5,000 square feet of impervious coverage were to be proposed, they would have to do a stormwater management plan at that time. The subject property is relatively flat. City and water are currently located within the West 7th Street and were installed or upgraded during the completed West 7th Street road project, and all water and sewer locations would be reviewed by Public Works and/or Montana DEQ prior to construction. Parkland dedication is not a requirement, as they are only creating one additional lot. Let's see, compliance with our city growth policy, this area is designated as suburban residential on our future land use map. The text relating to this classification does say it is for lower-density residential areas. Generally, it's for our WCR, WER, and WSR. However, and I hit on this during the zone change, but I'm going to reiterate it again, is that prior to the termination of the inter-local agreement, this property was zoned City WR1, and that was, so our interpretation when it was annexed, we've made it that it would go back to the zoning it had before that, and that was the basis for the zone change when it was approved. The proposed lots do exceed the minimum square footage of the WR1, that's 10,000 square feet, so they are well over that size. Obviously, they appear to be able to meet setbacks in lot coverage, but that would be looked at during the building permit process if they came in for one. They are requesting a variance to one of the standards of the subdivision regulations, that is, in order to not construct sidewalks along the frontage of West 7th Street and Carrow Avenue. With the reconstruction of the West 7th Street, the city did install a combined 10-foot-wide bicycle and pedestrian path on the north side of West 7th Street, across from the subject property. I did research that decision behind it and found it was done intentionally by the City of Whitefish at that time, due to neighborhood concerns and some of the existing right-of-way issues. There are currently no sidewalks along either, on the entire south side of West 7th Street or along Carrow Avenue, and if the applicant was required to install cash-in lieu, or, excuse me, install sidewalks or pay cash-in lieu, they'd be looking at a total frontage on West 7th Street of approximately 635, which is roughly equivalent about $19,000, sorry, getting a little ahead of myself. Carrow Avenue would be 349 feet, or about $10,500 roughly. The city subdivision regulations, it's section 12417B, and it does state that unless approved by the city council, sidewalks are required on both sides of the street for all residential and commercial subdivisions. The criteria for approving a variance says that no variance can be granted unless the council finds the conditions are met or not applicable. I'm just going to try to hit the highlights of it, and I can go into more detail if you have questions. have questions. It does not appear that variance would be detrimental to public health, safety, or welfare. There is already a 10-foot-wide bike path, or, excuse me, multimodal bike pedestrian path on the north side of West 7th installed during the reconstruction. Again, the subdivision's only creating one lot, and the applicant has proposed as an alternative to providing sidewalks or cash-in lieu at this time, that they would provide a 10-foot-wide easement along both frontages for any future sidewalk constructions, sidewalk construction. And I did include that as a proposed condition of approval, that that would be placed on the plat for final plat. This proposed subdivision, it is unique to the city. It's only one additional lot being created, but they are quite large lots for WR1 zoning. As I said, Lot 1 with the existing house would be a little over 1.6 acres. The vacant lot would be 4.7, where the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet. So, due to these large-sized lots, the amount of frontage on both streets requiring sidewalks would be approximately 984, almost 1,000 feet of frontage. And this is not comparable to the impact of use that would occur with two single-family residences for that property. Some of the hardship claimed by the applicant is financial. However, the hardship is not necessarily self-imposed. They are proposing to divide the property into two lots for the siblings. Basically, they're splitting it. Each one have one. Let's see, as I said, it would be approximately 984 feet. The total cost for all frontages combined, I came out to about $29,500 if they were to pay cash-in lieu or install them. And that's based on our current sidewalk calculations from the Public Works Department. And as I said, as a solution, the applicant is proposing to dedicate a 10-foot-wide easement along both frontages. And again, I, staff is proposing a condition on the subdivision that actually the applicant pay cash-in lieu for just the 30 feet of frontage, that Lot 1B, where the existing house is on Caro Avenue. So, they'd pay for that 30 feet of it, and that the larger 4.7 acres, we would reevaluate that for either sidewalk construction or cash-in lieu at the time if they came in for a future subdivision. And that I am proposing to have a note placed on the plat, so that it would be something that would either be caught in the future by future owners or by staff in the future as well, that we would reevaluate the variance and determine if we do want, in fact, want sidewalks or cash-in lieu at that time, depending on what they were proposing. Granted, the variance does not appear to cause a substantial increase to public costs. There is already, as I said, a 10-foot-wide path on the north side, and with a 10-foot-wide easement and future, a potential for future sidewalk construction, maybe the city would be able to acquire additional right-of-way to have sidewalks installed on the south side. Let's see, and I think that's it. So, I do find that the conditions for the variance are met or not pertinent, and we are recommending the council adopt the findings in the staff report and approve the variance request. And I am also proposing that the city council adopt the findings in my staff report and approve the preliminary plat, subject to, I have 15 conditions. And as I said, the conditions, site-specific conditions are basically number 11 through, and then 14 is where I, 11, 12, 13, 14, and those are the ones that are specific to the easement for the sidewalks, the cash-in lieu for just the 30 feet wide portion of the Lot 1B, and then the note on the plat as well. So, I'd hit the highlights, but some in-depth too for the public as well. So, if you have questions.
Thank you, Bailey. Anyone on council have a question for Bailey?
Bailey, when we create these two lots, are they two single-family lots, and can they in the future, could Lot 2, for example, come in and ask for further subdivision of that lot?
So, Lot 2 is actually in the county. So, that big one to the south, that's not part of this subdivision. Are you trying, so, and they numbered it weird. The two that we're talking about are Lot 1A and Lot 1B. Lot 2, which is that big one to the south, that's not a part of this. That's still in the county, not. It was subdivided before this property was even annexed into the city. So, we're talking about Lot 1. 1A is the one in the middle. It's kind of like a little flag. And then Lot 1B starts at the, I guess you could say that point of the flag, and wraps all the way around and goes down long ways. But yes, it could, I mean, both of them theoretically could come back in for future subdivision. They both are large enough that that could happen. Does that help? Do you understand?
It does, it does. And how is it that you're, we're talking about a Caro frontage here? Because my understanding is that if it's on Caro, it's probably not, it's in the county, not in the city.
Well, the whole property is in the city limits. Or is that, what do you?
Okay.
I guess which, I don't understand your question. I'm sorry.
I'm confused as well.
Okay.
I see 7th Street, I see Caro.
Mm-hmm.
And so, this entire lot, 1A and 1B are both in the city?
Yes. They were annexed back in August.
Right, and 1B seems to go further south and along and has mortar across from Lot 2. Is that correct?
No. So, here, can I show you?
The plat I'm looking at seems to show that.
So... Like B.J., and I'm not as, you know, good like B.J. is. So, this part here, this lot, is not part of the subdivision.
Right.
So...
This is?
Yes.
And this is?
Yes.
So, this is not, is in the county?
Yep, correct.
But this is not?
Correct. This is all one lot. That's what they're proposing.
Okay.
So, this is one lot. So, I was talking about this 30 feet of frontage here.
Okay.
Is where I'm talking about, they would pay that for the sidewalk cash-in lieu here. And then the remainder would be looked at here if they came in for a future subdivision.
Okay, thanks.
So, yeah. Anybody else? Questions?
Any other questions for Bailey? Bailey, I have a question.
Yes.
If I've interpreted this correctly, from the little flag north to 7th, along Caro, that's the area proposed for a 10-foot-wide?
Easement. Mm-hmm. Well, 10-foot-wide easement.
Easement.
Yeah.
Is that 10 feet from, does it give, what I'm worried about is that since we have a 10-foot shared path on 7th, does that give us enough room to separate the traffic from a 10-foot-wide bicycle pedestrian shared path on that stretch of Caro? Because I see in the future, and that's not that far away, that we should incorporate or be planning for that bike path. In fact, I think it's in the plan on Caro. Is there enough room there, or should we be looking at a wider easement?
I would defer to Craig for that question, if he knows off the top of his head.
It would. Is the easy answer? The slightly longer answer would be, we would likely rely solely on that 10-foot shared-use path and not have a separate 5-foot sidewalk on the opposite side, just like what we did on West 7th Street. But it would give us room for a grade-separated shared-use path with boulevard for snow storage and landscaping and streetlights and all those other things.
Okay. Good. Thank you. All right. We, so, I need a motion.
Before I make a motion, one clarification. Condition 12 states the applicant shall include a 10-foot-wide easement along both West 7th Street and Caro Avenue for future sidewalk construction, and we're looking at a cash-in lieu on Lot 1B. Will they still be providing a 10-foot easement for that lot as well?
I would assume so. That would be what I believe we would prefer. So, I mean, the point of cash-in lieu is that we take the money and in the future we would build it. So, I would assume that that would be the preference as we get for the entire property, so that if we do ever want to build a sidewalk in that 30 feet, we also have that easement as well, so...
Does anybody think we need clarification on number 12 to just make that clear, or are we okay as is?
It was definitely the intention to get a 10-foot-wide easement during the entire, along the entire stretch of Caro and West 7th. If that actual condition needs clarification in writing, I guess.
That's what I was wondering about, maybe just adding dedicate 10-foot-wide easement. I'm trying to think, across both lots, along, well, I hate using the word both, sorry, that's my, it's hard to come up with it on the fly. But something, basically putting in there that it will go across both, it would include both properties, both lots or across both lots.
Lots 1A and 1B along Caro?
Uh-huh, along both West 7th Street and Caro Avenue. Trying to figure out how to put that in there.
Okay.
But I get what you're getting at.
Did you get what you need, Jen?
Yep.
Does that mean you're ready for a motion?
I am.
Okay.
I would move to approve a minor preliminary plat, amended plat Lot 1, Torgerson subdivision address 835 West 7th Street, two-lot subdivision, as submitted by the applicant with the 15 conditions submitted in the packet, amending condition number 12 to include the clarification of both lots 1A and 1B.
Michelle, did, we okay? Okay? It's been, I have a motion?
Second.
And second. So, Councilor Franzen made the motion, seconded by Councilor Sweeney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. And Michelle, it passes unanimously. Thanks, Bailey. And that'll take us on to item nine on the agenda, the communications from our Public Works Director. Item A, consideration of approving contracts for engineering design and construction management for several Public Works projects in FY '17 and FY '18, and that will require three motions, and we'll take them one at a time. You're on. Craig?
Okay. Good evening. I will point you to page 309 of your packet, which is where my staff report begins. This started a few months back in November when council appointed both a rating panel and a selection panel for the RFPs for Engineering Services that we issued late last year. I'm happy to say that we did have nine proposals that were submitted for these RFPs. The consultants that responded were Robert Peschan Associates, WGM Group, Carver Engineering, Anderson Montgomery Consulting Engineers, AE2S, Morrison Merrily, TD&amp;H, KLJ, and Jacola. And so, I do appreciate all of those responses. The selection committee did get together and decided to have six interviews. We interviewed six firms on the 22nd of November last year, and based on those interviews, we are making the following recommendations for initiating contracts. On the Central Avenue Reconstruction Project, we are negotiating with the WGM Group for Engineering Services. For the Summers Avenue Reconstruction Project, the Flathead Avenue Roadway Extension, the Armory Road Drainage Improvements, and the Greenwood to Columbia Sewer Replacement, we're currently negotiating with Robert Peschan Associates. For the Cast Iron Water Main Replacement Projects, we are moving forward with Morrison Merrily. And on the South Whitefish Water Tank Evaluation, AE2S. To date, we have, I believe, successfully brought forward three contracts, which I'd like council to consider tonight. The first one is the Flathead Avenue Extension Project with Robert Peschan Associates. We're looking at a $51,200 contract at this point for the task that will essentially get us through the property negotiation phase of this project. It'll be preliminary engineering to design a roadway, land acquisition, and quite a bit of survey costs. Also with Robert Peschan Associates, the Greenwood to Columbia Avenue Sewer Replacement Project. For this task order, which is all-inclusive, basically to design the project, bid the project, and provide the construction-phase services, $77,200. And finally, tonight, I have the Morrison Merrily contract for $48,000 for the Cast Iron Water Main Replacement Project. Those involve water main replacement on West 3rd Street, West 4th Street, and a portion of Montana, north of the viaduct. So, all of those numbers are included in your packet, but it is the recommendation of the Public Works Department that we do proceed with those three contracts. And in order to do so, there's three motions in the recommendation of my staff report. I believe that's on page 311 of your packet. Pardon me, page 311 and 312. So, I can read those, or if you guys are so inclined, you can go through and do it yourselves. But there would be contracts for RPA on the Flathead Avenue Extension Project, a motion for RPA on the Greenwood to Columbia Avenue Sewer Replacement Project, and a motion to approve Morrison Merrily on the Cast Iron Water Main Replacement Project.
Does anybody need Craig to read through those? Or are we, Frank?
I got a question.
Yep.
Craig, I'm reading this here, and we're going to, this is an argument against myself. I'm just trying to figure out what's going on here. We've got a fiscal year 2017 budget for the Flathead Avenue Extension of $50,000. And we're proposing to pay Robert Peschan Associates $51,200, correct?
It's a, it is a not-to-exceed-dollar amount.
Right.
Knowing what the budget is, I would not propose that we go over the $50,000. As the dollars and cents worked out in their unit price evaluation for the hours, they estimated it was $51,200. But again, I would not propose that we exceed the $50,000 budget in fiscal year '17.
Okay.
But Frank, the fiscal year 2018 budget will have the entire project in it.
Right.
A big dollar amount.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to track through here. Now, on Greenwood to Columbia Sewer Replacement, we're proposing to pay $77,200. The budget for this project is $275,000. Do we get a bargain here, or what? I mean...
No, so, I guess let me clarify a little bit more. What we budgeted for on the Flathead Avenue Project this year is just the engineering and some potential land acquisition costs for that Flathead Avenue Project. We're really just looking to get to the point where we're ready to propose and potentially acquire some land to the property owners affected, and in order to do that, we need a preliminary engineering plan and a basic road design. So, those are the dollars included in the $50,000 that we budgeted this year.
Okay.
For the other two projects, for the Cast Iron Water Main Replacements and the Sewer Replacements, we budgeted for construction dollars as well.
Okay.
And so, the numbers that you're being presented in these three contracts are just engineering, but on those two particular projects, we also have budget allocations for construction dollars.
That's what I was trying to clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, I could have made that more clear.
Number three will include the cast iron on Central Avenue, is that correct?
No.
No?
The Central Avenue Project, so there's a couple of projects that I have not brought forward here tonight. We're still in the negotiation phase.
Okay.
And trying to work out the engineering portion, Central Avenue, Summers Avenue, and the Armory Road Drainage, and the South Whitefish Water Tank. Those are separate projects. The Central Avenue Project includes the water main, and so that'll be, that'll come forward at another meeting.
Okay. That's all I needed to know for now. Thanks. Anyone else for the questions? All right. I'll need a series of three motions if somebody wants to get this parade started.
I would move to award a contract to Robert Peschan Associates in the amount of $51,200 to begin work on the Flathead Avenue Extension Project in accordance with the scope of work included in this staff report. Second.
I have a motion by Councilor Franzen, second by Councilor Williams. All those in, or any comment? I do this in the right order. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank... Thank you, or left, either one. Raise your hand. Thank you very much, and it passes unanimously.
I would move to award a contract to Robert Peschan Associates in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, two hundred to begin work on the Greenwood to Columbia Sewer Replacement Project in accordance with the scope of work included in this staff report. Second.
And it's again been moved by Counselor Franzen, seconded by Counselor Williams. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much, and it passes unanimously, and on to number three.
I would move to award a contract to Morrison Merrily in the amount of forty-eight thousand dollars to begin work on the cast iron water main replacement projects in accordance with the scope of work included in this staff report. Second.
And again, the duo of Counselor Franzen makes the motion, seconded by Counselor Williams. And any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Thank you very much, and that also passes unanimously, Michelle. And that, thanks for that. And then, and item nine B, as you know, has been withdrawn by the applicant. That moves us on to communications from the city manager. Chuck.
My report is on page three seventy-two, so I don't know if there are any questions on it. If not, I don't have anything else to add to those items or any other items for tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Chuck, based on his report? Not seeing any. Questions? Lost my place here. Written, due to questions from the mayor or council, none. Other items arising between December twenty-eighth, January third? And one? Seeing none, consideration of awarding the contract for the sale and moving of the Depot Park Office Building to the North Valley Music School, that's on page three eighty-five of your packet. I suppose I could have sung that little ditty there, but I won't, you know, just hum. Okay. So we'll have some consideration. I see that there are members of the committee here standing by, I'm sure, to answer any questions that we might have, but I'll open the deliberations.
The staff report begins on page three eighty-five of the packet. Kind of some history, the council decided on October third to go ahead and continue demolition or removal of the building from Depot Park. On November seventh, you approved a resolution declaring it a surplus and authorizing its sale via auction, which is required of surplus property by the state of Montana. We advertised for bids for purchase with proposals closing on December eighth. The only bid submitted was from the North Valley Music School for twenty dollars for the entire building. They did not submit any conditions along with their bid. There had been some indications that they might condition their bid such that they'd only buy the building if they could lease or buy the snow storage lot, block twenty-nine, and place the building there. I have talked to them and said, you know, I think we could certainly entertain temporary storage on that snow storage lot, given that we would like the building removed by May thirty-first, so it doesn't interfere with the summer season in Depot Park. We don't have any financial requirements, we'll only receive twenty dollars, but we'll save a lot of money from demolishing the building, and the building will have a repurpose or a reuse, which is beneficial for everyone. We will have to pay for an asbestos investigation, but we would have had to do that even before demolishing the building. You have to do an asbestos investigation and do any asbestos abatement, whether you demolish it or move it. The investigation will cost two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, but as I said, we would have had to do that if we're gonna proceed with demolition. So you have one bid, and the recommendation is to award the contract for the sale and moving of the Depot Park Office Building to the North Valley Music School for twenty dollars.
Council discussion? Frank?
Chuck, would we not have had to do or had that inspection done before we took possession of that building?
No, I don't think so. I was here when we signed the papers, that was one of the early actions, to buy that south lot and the building. But just to occupy a building, you wouldn't have to do it. If you were going to do some significant interior renovations, where you were either tearing out walls or doing something like that, you might have to, because at that point you would possibly disturb the asbestos. But just to occupy it without any disturbing of the property, there was no requirement at that time.
Then I'll need a motion.
I'll move to award the contract for sale and moving of the Depot Park Office Building to the North Valley Music School for twenty dollars. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Franzen, seconded by Counselor Barbaris, to accept twenty-dollar bid for moving the Depot Park Office Building and selling it to the North Valley Music School. Any further discussion? Frank?
To the extent it's germane, it's not, and I apologize to my fellow counselors for doing this. I, I'm a little frustrated, and it's not your fault, Chuck, I'm a little frustrated that we, as a city, would take possession of a building at that, in that timeframe in particular, that we would not know that we were inheriting a, an asbestos-containing building. I mean, we did all the work that we did to determine whether or not the, what contaminated soils were around that park and in that park, and yet we take possession of a building as a city without knowing that particular thing. That frustrates me no end. I hope we never do it again. And it's not, again, it's not germane to this motion, I'm happy to move forward with it, but that particular, that bothers me. Just, it frustrates me to no end. Thank you.
Chuck?
Well, we don't know that there is asbestos in there, that's what we have to pay twenty-seven hundred dollars to find out. It's just a function of the Montana building codes now that you can't demolish it or move it until you do that, at least that investigation. You can certainly occupy buildings, because most, a lot of times asbestos in place is not a hazard. It's when it is fractured or fragmented, or you start tearing into it, that it can become airborne. So we do have to spend twenty-seven, twenty-five. If we, if they do find asbestos, the cost is even more, but we would have faced that even in demolishing the building. But we did get many years of use out of that building, when the parks, recreation, planning, and building departments have been in there. That wasn't the purpose when we acquired that building originally, as you know. The purpose was to demolish and remove the building, but we're moving along with that now, and we'll have to spend at least twenty-seven, twenty-five to investigate asbestos. Hopefully, there won't be any.
Further discussion, comment? Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Those opposed, and again, Michelle, it passes unanimously. That brings us to a letter from the Flathead Conservation District recommending the appointment of Lori Curtis to the vacant Board of Supervisors position. And I'll need a motion to do so.
I will move to approve a recommended, the appointment of Lori Curtis to the vacant Board of Supervisors position.
A second.
It's been moved by Counselor Sweeney, seconded by Counselor Williams, to approve Lori Curtis as our representative on the Board of Supervisors position to the Flathead Conservation District. Comments? I think this is gonna be a wonderful appointment, by the way. So, all those in favor, raise your hand. We're unanimous yet once more tonight, Michelle. Thank you very much. Consideration of making any appointments to volunteer boards and committees not made during the special session. And it's a mayoral appointment with the consent of council, and I'm gonna go ahead and appoint John Ellis to the planning board. And after discussion with council, the council wishes to appoint Jim Laidlaw to the Whitefish Lake Protection Committee. That brings us to item eleven C on the agenda. These are letters and emails addressed to the mayor or city council regarding the city's proclamation on rejecting racism and bigotry, promoting tolerance and nondiscrimination. That's on page four hundred of your packet. I had some discussion with the mayor, and he asked me to pass along his personal thanks for the hundreds of letters from around the country and around the world, and those who have written in support of the mayor's proclamation of December ninth, or was it the fifth?
Fifth.
Fifth, I'm sorry. December fifth, twenty sixteen. He wanted me to pass along a special thanks to the students and faculty of Moorestown Unitarian Fellowship in New Jersey, who sent fifteen personal handwritten letters in support of our stance on equity and equal treatment of all humans. I think all of us have probably received a plethora of comments as well, ask, or saying thanks for our stand as directed or as proclaimed by the mayor on the fifth of December. I know that sometimes, many people are having some conversations around town about the, I shouldn't say notoriety, but the press that we've been receiving as a city. And I just want the public to know that the city is doing all it can to monitor activities and take appropriate action. We're making every effort to ensure the safety of our citizens and visitors, and make no mistake, we remain united as a community and as a city. With that, we'll move right on to eleven D, ratification of city manager employment agreement with Adam M. Hammett to be the next city manager. That's on page four oh six of your packet. Give me just one second to get there. Chuck, you wanna discuss this? It's your retirement? Or is, or is this you, Angie? Do you get to talk about contracts? Who wants to talk about this?
For items under mayor and council communications, we typically don't do staff reports.
Okay.
This was your contract that you authorized the mayor to sign, so I assume you know all about it, and we put, we put it into the packet in case you didn't.
All right. I, I think we were all present during these long and laborious negotiations, but I, I would just comment that I think that our slate of candidates was excellent, and I think that Adam Hammett, when he rose to the top, like fresh cream on a bottle of milk, will be an excellent city manager. And we need to ratify that contract. Everybody, I'm sure, has read it, and we all sat through the discussions during the interviews. So I'll need a motion.
I would move to approve the city manager employment agreement with Mr. Adam Hammett to be the next city manager of Whitefish. The agreement dated the twenty-second day of December, two thousand and sixteen.
And I'll say.
Thank you, Jen. So that was a motion by Counselor Franzen, seconded by Counselor Sweeney, to approve the employment agreement with Adam M. Hammett to be the next city manager of the city of Whitefish. And this is a momentous decision, I think, made by the city and by council. So I'll need a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. And we're unanimous yet once again. Again, I just wanna comment that I'm really excited to have Adam come to Whitefish and be our next city manager, and recognize that the overworked expression of big shoes, Chuck will leave us with some big shoes for Adam to fill. Chuck, while he's not walking out the door tomorrow, has left the city in good hands, in good shape, and I am particularly appreciative of your efforts, Chuck. Anyone else?
And I'd also like to thank the community committee and the staff committee, along with the counselors, for their diligence in the hiring process. I know it took a bit to get here, but thank you so much, in addition to the numerous hours from staff, including Chuck and including Sherri, for all of their work in getting us to a new city manager.
All right. We'll start with some counselor comments at this point. Am I right, Frank?
Couple of things that came to my attention this week, or the past couple of weeks. And I, Craig, I don't know what we can do about it at this point, but there, there was, again, attention, I was drawn to the attention, but the fact that the parking, or the plowing in the railway district has been lacking, to say the least. It's ridiculously horrible to try to navigate those streets. I don't know whether we, as a city, need to consider some kind of ordinance that requires those cars to be removed on a, at night, or what we need to do, but we need to do something to get those, those streets plowed. I mean, we are, one of the things that's part of our master plan is to grow that railway district in terms of commercial development. And by not plowing those streets, we're creating a horrendous problem. We're biting ourselves in the, so I think, I'd like to have some examination of what we could do to get that improved. The other is, it occurred, again, it goes to the railway district as a problem, the general proposition, but it was also proposed to me, that is there a way for us to consider, particularly on, I'll call the north end of Lufford, north of, I guess, First Street, going to angled parking on the west side of that street. We have angled parking on the east side with the apartments, but that street is wide enough, it seems to me, particularly down there, that with angled parking, we might do ourselves a favor in terms of increasing the capacity down there. So that might be something we ought to consider.
Just to add that point, if I could, it is in our downtown master plan to include or expand parking in that district on the north side of Railway, just north of Lufford. So maybe, that may be a more adequate space, and it's one of the priority items in, north of Lufford on, is it Railway, or Railway Street, on the north side of Railway, just edging into the Aspens there in the Railway property.
Okay.
So if there isn't enough room for angled parking, I guess, on Lufford, that's, that's where the plan suggests we go next.
I'm a little mixed up. So Lufford runs north-south.
Correct.
So we got an east side of Lufford and a west side of Lufford.
Currently, Lufford on the west side is parallel parking only. I think there's room there if you wanted to consider putting.
Between Second and Third?
Between, no, between Railway and First.
And First, okay. All right, so north of Second.
Yes. And at least a couple of the businesses down and on that end of town would like us to consider that. And so I, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't. If we've got the room there, we ought to look at it, because again, it would increase some parking, and again, if we're gonna talk about that area as, as more commercial or retail, then we need to do some things to service it. That's my thought.
Jen?
Personally, I think the larger issue at hand in that neighborhood, especially during this time of the year, but all times of the year when parking is full, all of those streets suddenly become one-way. And I'm sure it's an issue for emergency services. So instead, I would like to try to find out how we can get those streets accessible by moving traffic as a priority. And I know that we have that parking structure coming along within a block of that district, so hopefully that'll eliminate some of that pressure. But especially at First Street and Baker, just on the west side of that intersection, it can be quite dangerous, people coming off of Baker, and it's an accident waiting to happen, it seems like. But no further comments tonight.
All right, Kate?
Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Pam?
I would just like to reference Mary Flowers' letter in regards to signage for our recycling center, and see if we can find a way to add that to our current wayfinding signs in the city.
So basically, you know, there was a wayfinding committee, and I polled the committee members to see if they felt that we should add recycling directions. And unanimously of the ones who responded, not everybody responded, they said no, because it was really tourist-oriented directions. We had a lot of requests, put a lot of things on those signs, and they sort of held off with a lot of those requests of everything wanting to be on there. The other complication is each sign would cost about at least $5,000 to replace, which there'd be three or four to replace. But if the council would like that as a priority, we can do it, but you'd be overriding the recommendation of the committee.
And the other concern was that, it was the opinion that that recycling center may be temporary, and with the discussions of what may go in that lot, and our past discussions of considering community-wide recyc, curbside recycling, I think it may be a little bit advantageous to wait this out just a bit and find out where that permanent location is.
I'd just like to reiterate, I'm really excited about the development of the bicycle pedestrian master plan update. I think it'll be a great addition, and as I said earlier, I don't believe that this is a sit-on-the-shelf plan. This is a plan that will drive and motivate us, I think, to make this a more friendly community to modes of transportation other than automobiles. With that, we are adjourned. Oh, Chuck, I'm sorry.
I was just going to point out, I think Craig and Public Works, you know, can look at some of the railway district solutions for plowing. Unfortunately, historically, the solution has been less parking. So Public Works would always like you to have not allowed parking on both sides of all those streets, just one side. So to make it easier to plow, we could have no parking on one side, and then you'd hear the complaints from the businesses about loss of parking and how that's destroying their commercial district and all of that. The other solution is, you know, to have some snow, basically what they do now is they try to give the entire neighborhood individual notice with notices on the doors saying, "We're going to plow on such-and-such a date, find another place to park, and then we'll come through and clear it out." Another alternative would be some, you know, snow emergency routes or restrictions, saying, "When snow is such-and-such, you can't park here." Unfortunately, what you end up doing then is towing a lot of people, and people who get towed are, don't like it. I do agree with Jen. I think when you have a parking structure, you might be able to look at limiting parking in that area to one side. I'm sure the businesses that are on the side that you don't allow parking will complain because they want parking right in front of their business. But unfortunately, with narrow streets, and when it was platted like that, the council allowed parking on both sides. I think, it was before my time, but I think it was probably over the recommendations of Public Works to allow parking on both sides. So the council at that time created it, and we can solve it, but there's difficult solutions, so. But Craig can look at different things. I think maybe signage with certain snow emergency routes, but those are often difficult to enforce as well. So usually, it becomes plowing versus parking.
Chuck, we have the same problem on Central Avenue. There's parking in front of every one of those businesses, and we require that they be removed at night so that people can get, we can plow when we want to. I, I think that there are some, I agree that we have some, we would end up with some restrictions on parking, and that would cause some hardship. And we, we need to examine that, but I really, if this is going to become a further extension of our commercial core, we need to start treating it like that. And that's what we, I just don't see how they, the two match. And so I appreciate that, but I don't think we say that's the way it was, and the streets are narrow. They are. Lufford is much wider. I'll say that's one street in particular. The others are quite narrow, particular ones east-west. But I don't think we ought to give up on it. I think we need to look at it.
And I agree. I just think there is a difference. You know, I would say if you drive in the railway district at 2:00 AM or 3:00 AM, even just go down there even tonight, you'll probably see a higher density of on-street cars from residents and people who live there. There are some houses down there that don't have parking areas. I think most of them do, but there are a lot of people who residentially park on the street as well. But I think Craig can look at it. I'm just trying to temper your, your expectations a little bit. It's a difficult situation, so.
Could I just add one more thing? We even try and make it one step simpler, and what we say is we plow streets in the morning, avenues in the afternoon. So if you live on an east-west street, you know that we're going to plow it in the afternoon. Sorry, east-west is in the morning. And so it'd be really nice if people in the community understood that.
Yep.
We've done what we can, or what we think we can, to advertise that, you know, with ads in the paper, with notices in, in water bills, with the Public Works Facebook page, but there's still cars parked everywhere at any given time. And so whatever we can do, or you guys can think of to broadcast that a little more vocally would be helpful, but yeah, there's a, you know, a ton of different winter parking regulations that we could put into effect, or individual street regulations that could be put into effect. But that is, the primary problem in the railway district is entirely based on plowing, or excuse me, on parking.
All right. Now we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. See you in two weeks.